All right, thank you. First item on the agenda is citizen concerns. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on an item not already addressed on the agenda? We also have a call-in number that is 712-224-6014 for any citizens who would like to offer comment on an agenda item or later at the end of this meeting. Moving on to item two, approval of the agenda, I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Raddig. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero. Items three through six constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion, items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three is approval of the minutes of the March 24th meeting. Item four is approval of claims. Item five from juvenile detention is to receive the juvenile detention February population report. Item six from human resources is approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions, and I will move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Raddig. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero. Item seven from community and economic development, Director David Gleiser, contains three action items. The first is A. This is to receive the zoning commission's recommendation to approve the zoning district map amendment. We have about seven minutes before our next set time.
Good evening, Supervisors. David Gleiser, Director of Community Economic Development Department. This item here, we have applicants Glenn and Stacy Pry. They're owners of parcel number 894634200010, which is currently addressed at 1523 Charles Avenue in Lawton. They're requesting to rezone this parcel from the agricultural preservation zoning district to the agricultural estate zoning district, and this is essentially being done to help facilitate the addition of one house with, one new house within that quarter-quarter section. Our zoning district regulations prohibit more than two houses per quarter-quarter section in the AP zoning district, so that's why they're requesting it to change it to the agricultural estates. They are proposing to split this property, which will be done in a subsequent action. We recommended that they apply to get the zoning changed first, and then they will follow through with the minor subdivision. But essentially what they're going to do is split their parcel, and that would allow them to build a new house, which the current occupants would, would basically live in, and then they would allow a family member, their son, to take over their current residence. So staff recommendation is to approve it. This last zoning commission, the commission voted in favor to recommend approval of the final plat.
This is fairly typical?
Fairly typical. The proposed use and future use of the land are in line with both agricultural preservation and agricultural estates, and this is in an area that we believe in the future more residential development would likely occur. So it does fit within the proposed future land use map and recommendations from the zoning commission, and at this time, we just asked the board to receive that recommendation.
I'll move to receive.
I'll second the motion by Raddig. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero. We're not quite at our 4:40 PM set time for the public hearing, so could you discuss item C, the motion to conduct the first reading of the ordinance? We'll not move on that yet, but...
It's a, it's a pretty straightforward action in terms of the next step. The next step is that we would propose the map revision, and that would basically just entail changing the actual map. And so the ordinance that is before you on item C is, is to change the zoning district of that particular parcel.
Could I ask if there's any at this point, still ahead of the public hearing, but are there any comments on this topic? Anyone would like to offer public comment?
As of today, we have not fielded any, any comments from adjacent neighbors or property owners for against the project.
Okay. Any questions for David?
He didn't kill enough time.
He didn't. It says a reading of the ordinance, so worst case, you'll have to read the ordinance. Past the time.
The ordinance reads, "A zoning district designation mapping amendment to the Woodbury County Iowa zoning ordinance. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Woodbury County Iowa adopted a zoning ordinance on July 22nd, 2008 by Resolution Number 10,455, being recorded in the office of the Woodbury County Recorder. And whereas the Woodbury County Zoning Commission has received a report in respect to amending said ordinance from the Woodbury County Zoning Commission, which held hearings on the amendment, all as by law provided, which, when, which the amendment is attached hereto marked item one and hereby made a part thereof. And whereas the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors has received said report, studied and considered the same, and has held hearings on said amendment, all as provided by law, and whereas the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors has concluded that the said ordinance shall amend the aforementioned zoning ordinance, now therefore be it resolved by the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors duly assembled that the aforementioned said zoning district is amended as shown on said attached item one, and the previous zoning district designation shall be repealed upon the effective date of this amendment."
Perfect. Nicely done.
A little cruel, but perfect.
Didn't read our names. There's still names at the... All right, any more comments or questions on this item? We are at our 4:40 PM set time. This is item B. The public hearing is open on this item. Is there anyone who would like to speak from the public? Hearing none, I'll move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero. Then we need a motion to approve the zoning district map amendment.
I'll move that.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Potabom. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero. Item C is a motion to conduct the first reading of the ordinance. I'll move that.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero. Thank you. We're not quite to our 4:45 PM set time, but we can move ahead to item eight, Board Administration. Director Dennis Butler in Finance. We can move to item C, Discussion and Adoption of Fiscal Year '21 Budget and Resolution. For now, just if you could summarize and consider the motions the board will have to adopt.
Okay, give a little summary here. Our tax rates for fiscal year '21 are actually going down 1.78% over the current rate for cities and for townships going down 1.59%. In cents per thousand for the cities, it's going down 12.843 cents per thousand and 15.438 cents per thousand. Our operating budget is actually going up $3,585,000. Doesn't correlate exactly with your tax asking, but you know, there's other instances where we had to cash reserves, cover things like that in the previous current year. So that went up that much. Capital budgets went down $837,000, so our net increase in taxes or budget went up 2.7 million, which is from $58,196 to $60,944. Now, on the second page of the handout I did hand out, I had to use $100,000 assessed house rolled back by the rollbacks down below to show us how the rollbacks went up or down. And explain this a little bit, this is if your valuation did not change, obviously in Sioux City, in the rural area, the valuation changed substantially for residential, industrial, commercial, and agricultural properties. That is, and for agricultural properties, the reason you see a 45% increase in the rollback is because our valuations went down a lot, supposedly according to the county assessor. So they're actually taxing more of the rural now, their values offset that by going down. So when you look at residential, if you had the same $100,000 house, your actual tax would have gone down $20.41 or 4.9596%. On commercial, industrial, it's gone down $11.56, which is 1.78%. When you get to townships, it falls pretty much the same except for residential, that only went down 1.53%. Commercial, industrial went down 1.59%, and ag lands went up 42.86%, but that's because the rollback went up to 81% from 56%, but their actual values went down. So it kind of compensated, evened it out pretty much. Again, I couldn't go on an individual basis for residential, industrial, or commercial ag land because of the valuation increases or decreases. But this is just a general, if your house would have stayed the same. But it's almost impossible to get any deeper than that because of such extremes.
Where do our reserves stand?
Our reserves in general base is around 18, 19%. And overall, the general fund is about 18, 19%. In our rural, it's a little less than that. But it's enough to suffice. It doesn't meet our financial policies of 20 or 22%, but we may have to look at those policies again and, you know, revise those policies at a certain point in time because we could make it on 15% the way the flow of money comes in. Obviously, that might be all up in the air now, but time will tell.
Anything else to highlight that we haven't already discussed?
No, I think our biggest increase is expenditures resolved through debt service and mental health.
Could you describe the biggest reason for the decrease in the CIP?
CIP because we're actually limited how much we're going to borrow on second, well, not borrow, the road projects is included there and also our CIP projects itself.
Okay.
Went down.
Very good. We're at our 4:45 PM set time. That's item eight A. A public hearing is now open to levy general basic property tax rate which exceeds the statutory maximum. Dennis, could you just explain what that means?
Okay, what this is, and we've done this for the last three or four, five years, if we exceed the 350 cap by law, if you exceed the 350 cap, which we actually are this year, but it actually went down from last year, I think it's 3.7 something, and we're going down to 3.65. And to do that, we have to have a separate public hearing before a regular public hearing to, you know, show the public what we've done, why we did it, and go from there. It's just a formal, basically.
Certainly larger counties typically are, have to exceed the cap or more property poor counties such as...
Statewide, it's about 26, 27 counties exceed the cap. Some of the legislature have to look at that cap because that cap was set 30 years ago.
Right. Public hearing is open. Is there anyone else to speak? Hearing none, I'll move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero. Item eight B is a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year '21 budget itself. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone to speak for or against the budget? Hearing none, I'll move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion on that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero. Item C is Discussion and Adoption of Fiscal Year '21 Budget and Resolution. This is actual passage of the budget. Included within this budget is, as it is every year, raises as recommended by the comp board for elected officials. Those recommendations can be received. Decreased by the same percentage across the positions are rejected. The recommendation of 2.75% is the same as received by wage plan and union employees for the next fiscal year. I don't see an issue with it as far as including it within the overall motion unless the board members would like to vote separately on it.
Combine it.
Not hearing that desire, so is there discussion on the budget as a whole? Well, understanding that every two years, we do have state mandated reassessments of property, the board has, this will be the sixth year, reduce the countywide levy in assessment years, non-assessment years, during different types of years and through disasters and things like that, so I appreciate the steady trend that the county has set for the, in the business environment. Any other comments? I'll move to approve the budget.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Last chance for any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero. We'll keep going for another year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine from Community and Economic Development, Director David Gleiser, once again is, includes item A for action. Receive the zoning commission's recommendation from their March 23rd meeting to approve the final plat.
This is a pretty straightforward minor subdivision. Property owners Thomas, Barbara, and Travis Thiessen own parcel number 89453310001, which is currently addressed at 2225 150th Street in Lawton. They're proposing a two-lot minor subdivision for residential purposes. The property is currently loaded in the agricultural preservation zoning district. It is not in a flood plain, and the current and proposed uses of the property are allowed under the zoning ordinance. Essentially what these folks are looking to do is maintain their existing residence on, on the parcel and create a new lot for sale. The zoning commission at their last meeting voted in favor to recommend approval of the final plat as proposed, and as always, all relevant agency and stakeholders were notified, and as of today, we have not received any objections or any comments for against the proposed plat. It's a staff recommendation to receive the zoning commission's recommendation and then move forward with the final approval.
I'll move to receive the recommendation.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero. Item B is approval of the decent addition, minor subdivision plat, and authorizing the chairman to sign the resolution. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10 from Secondary Roads, County Engineer Mark Nera, includes A for action, approval of a 2080 agreement for projects pairing 139 and pairing 141 with Lyon County.
Good afternoon. The two projects were part of the Competitive Highway Bridge Program. This was a grant that the Iowa counties, cities, and state DOT applied for that brought around $33 million to Iowa. The program is paying 55% of the cost of two of our bridges. One of the, one of the requirements of this program was that bridges be bundled for letting, which means they're lumped into contracts of more than one bridge. In our case, we ended up bundled with Lyon County. To proceed with that, we need to have a 2080 agreement with Lyon County approved. Woodbury County will be the contracting authority. Etrus will pay for our own bridges, but Woodbury County would be the, the county making the decision on the letting and handling the contract administration for the combined projects. I recommend approval of the 2080.
All passed legal.
What's that?
All went through the legal process and looks good.
It was, we didn't have a lot of wiggle room on this one. This has what was required by federal highway and the DOT.
Oh, okay.
There's no gotchas in it, Keith. Yeah, the biggest thing that I was concerned about was that we didn't have to front the money for Lyon County, which we don't.
Yeah.
That's included as part of the agreement. I had not run it through Joshua. We can table it and do so if you wish, but again, I didn't see anything that was, that gotcha on it, so.
I'll move it.
I'll second the motion by Raddig. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero.
This requires signature of the chair along with a test station by the county auditor.
Okay. Item B is approval of the federal aid project agreement with projects pairing 139 and pairing 141 with Lyon County. Andy, get ready on the switchboard for callers from Lyon County.
All right.
This project agreement sets out the federal aid participation and the maximum amount of money that would be dedicated to each project. It's based on 55% of the estimated project total cost. The two bridges involved are, are O'Brien Avenue Bridge over Coon Creek. This is about a quarter mile north of D-38, east of Ampton, south of Correctionville. L-36 is the north-south road coming down south out of there. The other bridge is on K-64, which is the Mobile Blacktop. It's the bridge that's roughly nine tenths of a mile south of Highway 20. Both of these bridges were selected by the process that the DOT used for determining eligibility, which was, had to be more than 150 vehicles per day. It had to be in the county five-year program. They looked for bridges that were of the same type. All three of these bridges are designed to be continuous concrete slabs, so same contractor using the same set of forms, handrail forms, all those type things will be able to build each of these bridges, so. The amount allocated from federal aid for the bridge south of Correctionville is $600,820. The maximum allocated for the bridge on the Mobile Blacktop, $464,270. The balance of this will be paid for out of swap funds, which are the state highway road use tax fund dollars that are swapped for federal aid. I recommend approval of the agreement.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Thank you. Item 11 for action is reads as it did last week. Due to COVID-19, the board will be discussing various issues and may take appropriate steps for the protection and safety of both the community and county employees. There are at least two items I'd like to discuss. The first will likely be just informational. I'd like our HR director to discuss the Department of Labor, FMLA, and sick leave legislation that's effective tomorrow. And then secondly, I'd like to revisit the screening process on entrance to the courthouse, which will likely involve action, and then after that, anything else deemed necessary.
Okay, Melissa Thomas, Human Resources Director. As he said, tomorrow goes into effect a new employee rights pay act. It's called the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, and I have a copy of the Department of Labor. Just here. That will be... .................................... Now, for this act, there's actually two provisions. One is an extension of the FMLA Act of Family Medical Leave, and that provides employees who do not have daycare or whose school has closed up to 10 weeks of pay for two-thirds of their pay. Now, they have to provide paperwork and file other things to make sure that they're in compliance, and it's only a 12 weeks overall the calendar year. This isn't in addition, so the FMLA is just extended. This isn't on top of the regular 12 weeks. So that is one. And then the other is called the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act. Now, as you can see on this flyer, there is six different categories for a person might be off of work. So if you fall into the one, two, and three category, which basically is you're quarantined, you are sick, your healthcare provider says you have to stay home, you're provided two weeks of pay. If you fall into the four and six category, which you're taking care of somebody else, that is two-thirds of pay for two weeks, and then the number five is taking care, childcare for two weeks there, two-thirds pay. This only goes into effect until the end of December this year, and we as a county are going to provide employees all the information they need for these provisions. There is one, there is one thing. This does provide for two weeks. Well, we do have employees that do not have 40-hour weeks. That's a 207K plan, so we're kind of looking at either the 80 hours or the two weeks for the employees that might expand that for their pay period.
Okay. And just as a helpful note, this, the county's existing policies recently passed in reaction to COVID-19 regarding time off are, are in addition or complementary to this legislation. It's not as if it over, one overrides the other. In addition to these employee rights for those that are directly impacted, say they're diagnosed, they're caring for someone who is diagnosed, the county also has, you know, policies for those that may not be directly impacted but for other reasons are impacted by the, by the pandemic.
And they need to stay home.
Yep. So we'll still have the, in, in the auditor's office, those, those categories relating to COVID, but in addition now with the, with the effect of this legislation, we'll have...
Three more categories.
Three more categories, okay.
Three more codes that Michelle is working on. When this is all over, there will be, there will be tax breaks available for the employers on this payment, so.
Do we get reimbursed, Danny, for federal? I thought there was some kind of reimbursement to keep track of all this, or do we get reimbursed?
There is the tax breaks, and I think they're kind of looking into that right now to see exactly what, what's going to be reimbursed.
Tax credit.
Credits.
Tax credit.
It would be probably from withholding. We haven't determined that yet, but that's what I believe it would be.
Any questions?
Will you inform the employees of this separately or simply post it around and...
I have simply posted it right now. Tomorrow, I plan on sending an email out to the employees.
Yeah, I think this is a good one-pager to, it's a lot of good concise information, so.
We'll have a lot of questions and do a lot of this by hand, but we'll get through it.
Okay.
Do you think that we're going to need to do an official update to our FMLA policy to implement this?
I'd have to look at it. I mean, like I said, it's, it is temporary until the end of December.
Right.
Some counties are actually considering that.
Well, and I was on a webinar yesterday from the League of Cities, and it was suggested that that's something that we should probably look at, so we may want to discuss that.
Just so it's not in conflict?
Right, because, yeah, I mean, obviously, it's different than what our existing written policy is, and even though it's temporary, our policy should match what the current status of federal law is.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Just for clarification, right? I mean, just...
Right. Implementing it, but just so that what's written matches what, what we're implementing.
Bring that next week.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Any questions from anyone on the legislation or...
Dave Drew, Sheriff, just want to thank you, Pat, for we've been kind of muddling through some of this stuff, PJ. Just want to make sure on record that, see, my employees, they all work different hours, and though it's only 80, some of them work, what is it, 84?
84, yeah.
We want to make sure that they're covered, even though this is 80. So somehow, the difference would have to be made, yeah.
So would this have any effect on the employee handbook in any fashion, or just, since it's temporary, it's not going to touch that?
I think that's what Joshua was talking about.
Well, that's what I...
I don't, we don't have anything as for the actually emergency paid leave, so I don't know, do you think there'd be a policy for that? I don't, we don't have anything as for the actually emergency paid leave, so I don't know if we think we have policy for that.
You and I should probably sit down, look at what we have, and, and if it's, um, not consistent with the new changes, then we probably do need to look at amending it temporarily.
And then next, are we going to discuss courthouse issue?
That's what, that's about screening procedures. I think that's when that discussion will come up.
Right. Go back in your chair.
It was, it was the next one back.
Not that one.
I wanted to make the board aware of the, one of the bigger concerns that my staff has come to me with is, uh, folks that have gone home on sick leave, um, requiring seventy-two hours before they come back to work symptom-free. This has caused some objection from people who have flu-like or corona-like symptoms but haven't been tested and diagnosed. They're objecting to not being able to come home when they, or come back to work when they feel good, and that it's impacting their sick leave balances. I'm not looking for a decision today, but I wanted to make you aware of that, that, you know, we are tracking those with the corona leave codes that the auditors and HR office created. But there is still that, uh, lingering concern out there that, you know, the guys would rather work than, uh, ding their sick leave balance.
How's that different than like last year?
Normally, when a guy gets over the flu and he feels good enough to come to work, he came to work. We didn't say he had to stay away. What's that? You have the same problem?
We might as well have that discussion now.
Might as well have that discussion now, right, Pat? So we had an individual that will not be named, had an, uh, issue with a spiked a hundred point four temperature. Unrelated to any of this, had a doctor's note to come back to work. Uh, checking with Department of Health, Tulane District Health, uh, BECA, CDC, all the things. No, couldn't come back for three days. So I made the decision to put him on administrative leave, and that we would pay him because he wants to come back to work. Because all these parameters are getting in the way, we're not letting him, so. We paid him. We paid him.
Right. And that's what, uh, that discussion, Joshua and Melissa, she's been talking to, uh, the attorney, and, uh, that's something that's going to have to come to the board to make that determination, what we're going to do about that, those situations. Can't do it right now, but that's, uh, that's a concern that he has expressed, and you're expressing it now too, and that's something we're about to issue. Melissa, do you have any more information?
Just one more thing, we even had a couple of guys with, with definitive illnesses that were something else. Their doctors recommended they not come back for forty-eight hours, unless allowed by their employer, so they dumped those to us too. It turned out that one was a sinus infection, I can't remember what the other one was. But again, we had the, we have these issues kind of boiling under there where people perceive they feel good enough to come back to work, and we're not alone, so.
Just tell me to understand, so the doctor says they can return to work, but you call Tulane District Health, they recommend against it?
That was the case in a couple of these, like with the sinus infection. The doctor said, "Well, you know, after forty-eight hours, he should be symptom-free, um, by then, and, and not able to transmit his illness." So I said, "Well, you got to sit out the forty-eight hours," although he felt well enough to come back. He had started his antibiotics, but, you know, the doctor said, "You can come back if your employer will let you, but I recommend forty-eight hours." So we held him to that. One was a sinus infection, one was a similar infection, where both were undergoing a series of antibiotics. Again, not COVID-19, but another contagious illness that could have spread among the crew, so.
Can I just say?
Sure.
I, I think, but in any year that would have happened, we would...
Microphone, please, microphone.
I just think in any year or at any time when somebody has sinus infection or anything, no matter what's going on, they would still have to stay. That's different, that was... Yeah, on that one, so I just... I mean, all this is going to change tomorrow, so.
Yeah.
And we don't want to, yeah, I have two months left. And we were acting on the, uh, the abundance of caution, even maybe to the extreme, but we weren't going to risk anything, so seventy-two hours, and he was informed. We have the ability to put people on, uh, administrative leave all the time for investigations or whatever may come up. So that's one of the things that the sheriff can do, I'm sure the auditor can do too. We have administrative leave, we've had it forever. I'm not sure on the other public offices, but ours we have.
They've never used it.
Well, that's certainly the major intent is for that purpose, and fortunately, if this happened tomorrow, this would simply be classified as... There you go.
And then he'd get paid back on his sick time, right?
I don't think it would impact his...
This is, it's not retro.
On that, yeah, right.
I'm just trying to address it going forward, since we can't act on it right now.
But what's taking place is that, uh, after tomorrow, starting tomorrow, is it won't impact their sick leave because of different bank. You can't, that's what the law says, right?
Right.
Can't impact their accruals.
So even if you had to use it first, you'd get it back type deals, what we were talking about in the meeting, right?
Right, you don't have to use it first, it's a separate...
And my deal was a separate deal because the new thing had come up, and I told you I was ahead of the curve. Just, just so I understand, is that for the illness and the seventy-two hours symptom-free, or is that just the seventy-two something?
It would be for the illness as well.
Okay.
It would be for what the provider says, right? And then after that, if you go to ten different people and they all give you ten different opinions, we have to go back to what the provider says. Everyone good with that? Okay.
Does Clarisma and, uh, information will be coming out tomorrow?
It'll be coming out soon, we don't know if it'll be tomorrow. Yeah. Right. I mean, yeah, there's still some issues.
Yeah, I, I mean, even though it's a government forum, I do, I've, I've read a lot of things in my multiple jobs about this, you know, virus and this legislation. This is a pretty concise one-pager, so I think it'll be very helpful. Ninety percent of the questions can be answered by reading this.
And some of those, I mean, who certifies it that, you know, it's, it's, uh, part of the virus and that type of issue? There's a lot of it you're going to, it just says if you're going to seek, uh, medication, that sort of thing. So, yet to be seen, because that's what we were talking about.
Oh, seeking a medical diagnosis, yeah.
I hate, I hate to belabor this, but one of the challenges with this is many doctors are refusing to see the employee. They're saying, you know, unless they're having respiratory difficulty and on death's door, they're instructing them to weather it out at home. They would give an employee, the one employee said that he could get a note to that effect. We're waving the notes, so I'm taking his word for it at this point in time. He's not one who was, uh, who would abuse sick leave. But, um, I'm just hopeful we get some guidance along with that, so we know we're headed in the right direction and treating them all correctly. Good thing is we're in the middle of a pay period, so there is a little time to sort this out.
Sounds like in that case, you just, they just need to get a note from the provider.
Have them email it to me or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? All right, I also want to discuss the screening process. The action the board took two weeks ago expires today, uh, which was to silence your cell phones.
That's just the vibration.
Silence your cellphone on the table. Was to ask for courthouse security to ask, uh, visitors to the courthouse, "Do you have an appointment?" Uh, because the current procedure is to allow access, public access to the courthouse by appointment only. There are very, three very helpful phone number, uh, posters on the way in for people to make an appointment, uh, in the same moment if they didn't make an appointment before coming in. Discussion from the board on, on this process. All just going swimmingly.
Is it working?
Supervisor DeWitt, don't you have something?
I'm, I'm weighing my options here, Pat. I, I'm, I'm just waiting to see what some of the other reactions are.
Okay, I said for the board, and so I'm patiently waiting.
Mr. Raddick.
I mean, nobody comes and makes appointments for me, so I can't tell you how it's working or not, so.
Mr. Podobal.
That's what I said, is it working? Asking that.
I don't think we have, and other than PJ or Melissa's department, anybody that might get an appointment every now and then. In this building, anyway.
Oh, and Pat. And we have somebody who's at the front door sometimes, they, they could tell us if it's working.
You mentioned this morning that you've been observing things, Mr. Gill. What did you, what did you see and what's, uh...
Well, I know that, I came in and talked and, and discussed it with Supervisor DeWitt, uh, security guard DeWitt at the time, but in that role. Uh, what has been taking place and what I've been witnessing is that I'm, uh, I'm asking the board to close the courthouse to the, the public. I mean, what we were looking at first for, for screening procedures were that, uh, wanted to get ahold of some thermometers and that sort of thing to, so that we could kind of tighten that up a little bit. But from what I've been observing is that, uh, it's, it's kind of, it's very difficult to do it, and we also have the security people. We're down to two regulars now, or, yeah, that are coming, because most of those folks are in, uh, compromised, uh, health situations. And, uh, just, uh, we went up, uh, I asked PJ to accompany, he's not, uh, I want to be clear that he's not, uh, on board with that yet. PJ, could you come up so I can at least see you? But, uh, we did go up to, uh, Court Administrator's Office, and, uh, there's only one person in the Court Administrator's Office at this point. And we talked, uh, by phone with, uh, Chief Judge, and, uh, you know, they, they really aren't on board with it, because there, there are things that they have to, they're still, uh, working with. Would you like to comment at this point, or just went?
I'll, I'll let others finish, but I'm definitely here to give, uh, our views, our concerns, and also ask, answer questions and give information to those who don't know what the courts are doing.
All right. We'll wait till you can come to the mic. But, uh, so, but I'm going to, I'm working actively to close our offices to the public and be able to provide, uh, services. I didn't get to finish up with, uh, Joshua was asking a question today about, uh, electronic recording, if that's the only way that we can do it for, uh, recording documents in the recorder's office, because most entities are doing that now, electronic recording. We do have some, uh, some, uh, offices that are still, uh, having folks come in to file things. But I've also witnessed, uh, people that come in that you folks have to deal with, is that, uh, not a lot of common sense, uh, being used there. That, uh, come in with, uh, mothers are coming in with toddlers and babies and, uh, things that they're bringing them all into, to the recorder's office and that type of thing. And, uh, and then a case in point, uh, PJ and I were up when, uh, up, uh, when we were talking in the administrator's office. A, a person come wandering up there looking, trying to figure out, uh, you know, trying to navigate the court system, and, uh, he had a document in his hand that PJ looked at, I'd make sure I washed my hands after I saw him. But the thing is, is this person, yeah, there wasn't any reason for him to be there, honestly, when, after PJ talked to him, is that, uh, it was something that, uh, if somebody could have talked to him over the phone, told him, you know, he, he didn't need to come in, because it, it was some sort of, uh, hearing that, uh, his attorney had already been appointed to him. It was over, it taken place over in the law enforcement center, so there was no reason for this person even to be in the courthouse. And, uh, you know, and we have language barriers and that type of thing. I don't know what the answer is to, to deal with that, but I know that the security folks, I mean, when you're down to two people, obviously, they're not, uh, they're not excited about taking on that role anymore, what has taken place. And so, like I said, I'm going to, uh, one of the things we're looking at, I talked to Joshua about, is a in-person absentee, the law requires us to do. I call the city, when it comes to that point that we're going to do that, we're going to bag a meter out front, and, uh, we will do curbside assistance for those, those type of things. Uh, and the staff is, I, I mean, that's what really brought it to my attention, is, uh, even our staff is getting much more nervous as, as they continue to absorb everything that they're reading, you know, and hearing, is that they're getting, uh, concerned about bringing it into, and, uh, or was it, uh, where's the courthouse that the county attorney's office has infected? Yeah, it just makes it a mess of things when, you know, when that happens, and, uh, so I'm just recommending to you that we do that. I understand that you folks might not be there yet, but, uh, that's what we intend to do in our office, and that's what I observe. And the other thing is, is, um, deliveries. Uh, we have people that are coming through, making deliveries, uh, think that we could do something with the building services, have them, uh, you know, complete deliveries, but we don't need those.
Have them absorb, uh...
We don't need, you know, and honestly, I mean, we just don't need all those, uh, folks in the courthouse. And so they're being more concerned.
Could I ask, are you finished?
Yes.
Could I ask, uh, two questions of Supervisor DeWitt? One, I guess, why are you down to two people? And two, I'm sure that traffic is, is down from before, but how much is it down?
Uh, to answer your first question, we are down because of mostly involuntary. Uh, one has compromised immune system, he's been sent home by his doctor till further notice. One, two, three, I can't remember, three or four, help me, Lieutenant Armstrong, are, are on administrative leave due to compromised health conditions. Uh, one has voluntarily walked away because of a business that he has on the side, dealing with infants and such. Does that answer your question? Okay, uh, so that does leave just two of us at the moment that are cursed with the healthy lifestyle enough that we can still work. We do get, uh, we're getting help from, from transport, regular deputies taking them off the road to bring them in, because we have to have two people at the front door at all times. With court and such like that, we have to have two of us at the front door, have to have two of us in the building at all times. Traffic is down, it is... I'll put it this way, traffic is down, there are same people, some people that are just flatly turned away because of a language barrier. They do not have a phone, we are not allowed to let them use our, our desk phone, they are not going to use my phone, my personal phone. Again, some of them are flatly turned away, some of them are guided to the, uh, the listing of all the phone numbers for all the offices that are still functioning, whether it's city, state, or county. They're paying their fines, their child support, their alimony, their, in a nutshell, everybody that we touch is far, far higher maintenance than in the past. In the past, we basically screened them for security measures, asked them which, if they knew where they were going, guided them in the right direction, and sent them on their way. Right now, we are handling nearly all of the tasks for some of the offices, so I cannot overstate that the people that, that are coming in require much more attention and take a lot longer to deal with, even though the numbers are down. And that's not even talking about the language barriers yet. And the people that do not, don't know why they're in here for court, or tell us the wrong court, as, as Mr. Auditor said here a few minutes ago. You know, we don't keep track of the court cases. It'd just be such an overwhelming amount of information that we just can't keep. If they come in and tell us they're here for court, what kind of court? We try and discern if it's traffic court, which is obviously not in this building, it's across the street at the LEC. Um, if it's criminal court, or domestic, or mental health court, or, uh, Veterans Court has been, uh, put off for at least two weeks, I believe. But once they tell us it's court, we really can't tell them that they can't come in, uh, although we do try and make sure they're in the right building, the right courthouse for whatever they're here for, so.
And as far as traffic, uh, just wanted to comment if I could. Uh, the recorder's office, uh, we still have people coming in that, uh, you know, they, they're making immediate appointments, we're letting them... We're letting them in just one at a time, but that traffic really isn't down. And that's what I've asked them to document, what's coming in, because a lot of those folks, they can, they could do, they can do by mail or online. But some of the difficulty with that is like for a marriage license, you have to.
Witnesses and?
Yeah, notary, yeah, they have to be notarized and that type of thing. So usually they come in, they bring a witness and they notarize them right at the, at the counter.
Have you got to the point where if something, if someone calls you for an appointment at the door and what they're asking can be handled with a phone call, do you reject them physically coming in and say, we will?
We haven't, we haven't done that yet, but that's what, that's what I'm talking about, is closing the office, is doing that type of thing.
Okay.
Because what, what by appointment was just trying to keep them from lining up, the social distancing. I think that's working fairly well as in Rocky.
Seems to be. I mean, we don't have.
I was concerned with people piling up in the rotunda, but.
Well, and yet, and that was yesterday, I think we had five people all at the same time down by the front door paying their fines.
Right, that's the, I forgot.
So, you can put all the signs and TSA's out there you want, but they're still gonna pile up wherever they, wherever there's something to do.
That's what I, forgot to mention that. And that was the other thing, considering is maybe over the Law Enforcement Center in that lobby, if you want to put up drop boxes and that side and thing, point people over there where, there are no offices over there that they have, they have access to. At least we could put, maybe we could put boxes up over there that they could do that, but that's what they were doing. I noticed that again.
Almost every one of them needs an explanation on how to, what to do when they get there. And I don't know that if you put an unmanned, and we're, I guess you'd call a semi-manned right there where we're at, because. I'm not saying that, I'm opposed to that because it takes some way from us the load, but they'd be wandering around looking.
I did notice that, there were four or five of them this morning, they're piled up and trying to pay fines and then they're waiting in line to talk to these folks to explain to them what forms they're supposed to be using.
Are these three to four on administrative leave so indefinitely, or is there a?
There's five total gone.
Indefinitely?
As far as I know, until the, until the COVID thing is lifted, or the, the social distancing thing is lifted, or they've relaxed the, uh, medical guidance lines, whatever, what have you.
They're, they're part-time employees, so it's not that we can't find somebody else to take their place. And that's what we'll be working on.
Okay.
We have people that, right now are helping, somebody from the jail, our numbers are down, so we can switch people around. So we'll, we'll be able to cover it. And we want to make sure we don't go over the allotted hours that part-timers are supposed to have. We'll, we'll make sure we have enough people there.
So these folks, are they being paid too while they're on administrative leave?
Well, I'm gonna tell you this much, that I don't know, because that, I wouldn't be. That's something that was in this policy book a long time ago that I brought up, that I didn't know was part-time, you should be getting all these benefits, but that's between the board.
What? They're taking?
They're accrued.
You're, you're using their accrued benefits?
I understood they're on admin.
Well, I'll follow up with Melissa on this, but it sounds like they should be taking accruals. Yeah. Okay, just confirm that, please. Yes.
Sorry, I didn't mention this before, with the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act, it does work two weeks for part-time people too. So, you know, going forward as of April 1st, let's say they get 10 hours a week. They would get 10 hours the first week and 10 hours the second week, so just to let everybody aware of that.
All right. Your Honor.
Steve Angresen, one of the district judges here and kind of filling in today for Judge Hoffmeyer. As far as the courthouse is concerned, I guess I at least want to express to everyone here who may not be as familiar and giving ideas to what we have done and are doing to limit foot traffic into the buildings. This is on a state level and on a local level. Our court offices, obviously, we have employees in this building also. And they have their concerns and we have people with the higher risk, elevated risks. Every one of the court offices in this building have gone through, they've identified people, they've set up schedules. People are working from home if they can, developing schedules to kind of rotate in and out so that we are limiting the number of bodies in this courtroom, courthouse also. Clerk's office, confined space, more than 10 people, that's not happening. Bodies are being sent home, working from home. On a state level, supervisory orders from the Iowa Supreme Court Chief Justice, we are continuing all trials, all hearings, or they're being conducted telephonically. There are certain emergency matters that if we can, we're doing them telephonically. But the emergency matters involve issues that just can't be pushed down the line until this is all over. For us as the courts, closing is not an option. It just can't be done. We're not allowed to close the courts. We're not allowed to close access to the courts, particularly for these emergency matters that are kind of those vulnerable people who need justice. And what we're talking about from personal appearance hearings, we're talking about the abuse type of protective orders, domestic abuse, elder abuse, sexual abuse protective orders. And we're primarily talking about the civil commitment actions, the mental impairments, the substance-related disorder folks. And Josh is working on civil commitment things. Even those, we are conducting as much of those by phone as possible. Where there are agreements, it's being done on paper, so people aren't coming into the court building. But there are just certain things and, and other things that I think will help even reduce the foot traffic down or are recent actions that have been taken by state court administration. One of those is a supervisory order that suspends some of the notarized requirements. So, for example, a lot of the foot traffic people coming in needing to go to the clerk's office to fill out applications because it needs to be notarized, those are being suspended so that pro se folks can apply electronically with electronic signatures. They don't have to be seen face to face. Obviously, with some of the people who are filling out those forms and filing those petitions are not gonna have the best electronic access to do that. So we understand that that may not reduce the number of foot traffic as much as we would like, but it's now being implemented. So that is something that will hopefully reduce the foes. Court debt, supervisory order, Chief Justice has now suspended the 30-day delinquency on court debt. And I don't know, PJ, what your office is doing as far as the county attorney collections are concerned. But in addition to all the different ways that people can pay their court debt, online, mail, that's being encouraged, the Dropbox. They now are no longer going to be declared delinquent court debt by statute if it's not paid within the 30 days. So they're, they're still gonna owe it, but they get a reprieve on that delinquency. So hopefully people will, as they know this, as they're informed about it, because it just did happen, that'll hopefully cut down on the people who come in because now they don't feel compelled, I've got to get this payment in by a certain date, or it's going to affect my license, it's going to affect me. This is more for the LEC than for the courthouse. But they've extended days for civil citations and kind of that payment date so that we're not gonna have as many of the walk-in, the traffic dates. I think law enforcement are, are aware of that now, so if they're issuing a citation, they are allowed to set that appearance date out, I think it's 90 days, rather than a shorter time period now. There's been some foot traffic, I think, over in the LEC, mostly because of the leg, where the citation was issued before all of this hit, so that date had already been set. But that's being reduced. The criminal hearings, as opposed to trials that aren't being continued, they're being conducted telephonically or by video as much as possible. I think the jail routinely having folks who are in custody anyway, available by video, go to meetings. So that's being done to reduce the foot traffic. But again, for the courts, we're, we are limiting what needs to be done and what has to be done now. But we can't stop, we're gonna be open. So I understand the concerns and I think we've worked well with the county in the past, worked well with the sheriff's office, and we're willing to try other things to help alleviate some of that congestion and to help give better directions. We're developing additional signs of our own that will give court people more direction as to why are you here and do you need to be here? As we all know, they may or may not read that, but at least it will have those questions answered so that the people at the door don't have to answer those questions. But again, our concern, if you close the courthouse, the courts are still open. So rather than having somebody at the door, having some directions by signs, basically what you would be, I guess forcing us to do, is to come and let them in ourselves. So now we have people still coming in the courthouse. We're gonna have the same number of people coming in the courthouse, whether there's security there or whether the doors are unlocked or not, because the courts are not gonna close, they just can't. I know there was a mention about perhaps shifting things. If we could shift things to reduce traffic, we would do that. But shifting everything from the courthouse to the LEC just isn't a viable option because it's more than just a courtroom for hearings. Clerk's offices, we can't move the entire clerk's office over to the LEC. And again, a lot of the foot traffic, my understanding from the court standpoint, you're looking at people coming here to pay court debt, you're looking at people coming here to file applications. And again, it's primarily the, the protective order of abuse cases or the civil commitment applications. And you've got people who are still coming here for court appearances. Already mentioned everything that has been done to reduce the number of people who have to come to the courthouse to do that. But it still needs to be accessible. So that's our view from the courts. And again, we're looking at ways that we can reduce this as well and still keep providing our services. Clerk's office did with the Dropbox, I understand that then people congregate right inside the doors. But presumably, that's still better than having those folks all filter in and then going to the clerk's office and pack out. The, you know, the hearings, we are redoing our scheduling with a lot of the other hearings being continued. The protective order hearings, we are starting to schedule those instead of 8:45 every morning, which was our standard scheduling, because then we have trials and everything else starting at nine. We're gonna start spreading those out throughout the morning. So that may mean more people in the courthouse at 10:30 than otherwise. But at least then we won't have this group potentially of 10 people all coming in at 8:45 for 8:45 hearings. Maybe missing things, but those are the things that we are already doing to help reduce that foot traffic. And if there's things that we can do more, I know we've worked with the sheriff's office already to address concerns with prosper point and also address whatever concerns there are with the LEC. Quite frankly, the LEC, if you're gonna put more people over there, you're basically creating the risk of more exposure in a building that has zero control. There are people just gonna walk in and wander around and you have less monitoring of them. And it's the same building as the jail. And I'm sure nobody wants this thing to start hitting the jail as well. So I guess I'm, if there are questions as to what the court is doing in other areas of foot traffic that we are creating, or other questions about what we are contemplating or looking at or trying to do to reduce that more, or if you want to ask whether, if, if the courthouse did this to restrict further access, how would that affect the courts? I'd certainly be glad to try to answer them. I know one issue that was raised by Amy in the clerk's office is if the building is locked, or what does that do? What are we still doing for, for mail, for picking up payments? Because they still need to pick up payments that are coming in. Just a lot of issues involved. We're already trying to address that issue of just kind of that appearance or that thought of people that the courts are closed and not open for business. I'll turn it over if anybody else has any comments, or Josh or PJ, or any other input, or any questions.
Pat. Rocky, is it, what I perceived is most of those folks that are gathering down there, is that about paying fines? Is that where most of that comes from down there?
Uh huh.
What can we do about that? Because we do, I mean, like I said, we have the language barrier, a person that was out one, was out there wandering around and, you know, didn't need to be in here. But mostly what is occurring from what I see is those folks are all gathering down there, trying to figure out, there isn't anybody to explain, you know, what they're supposed to be doing. And so they're talking among one another and then they're trying to get the security people to answer their questions.
No, we take them down there almost, almost to the one and explain to them, here's your instructions, use this, this is your instructions and such like.
But when they pile up, that's when I, I've seen.
Oh, right. And it's, but I don't.
That's where it's not a good situation.
No, and I understand that, but in my understanding is that there are signs, there are instructions. Okay, no, no, don't get me wrong. I understand that people don't read them. But, and, and I agree that, that shouldn't be put on the security people to explain that. But locking the courthouse doors isn't going to alleviate that because we're still gonna have people that come to the courthouse to pay. And I don't know where else to put the Dropbox or put those instructions. There's still gonna be some foot traffic, people getting to the clerk's office. And if they call the clerk's office, then the clerks are gonna come down and speak to them. So you're still gonna have people congregating. If there's a different location for that Dropbox, if there's better instructions that we can give, I'm certainly willing to, I shouldn't say, ah, it's not up to me.
Right.
But we're certainly willing. But we're certainly willing to consider that, but-
When I say 101, I mean, legal filings aside from small claims court, and 102 is where they typically pay fines, and I know you know that, but I'm, for the good of the public to understand this, the clerks in 101, for the most, and I shouldn't say for the most part, but the clerks in 101 have been coming out and taking care of, or are coming out and informing us that a certain individual is coming, hold them at the door, they will come out and deal with it, take their paperwork, look their paperwork over, turn them loose. Because we've had a couple of times where someone comes in to file something, drop something off, and I look, we don't know the difference. So, they, they leave the paper there, they take it, and the people take off, well, no, they didn't fill it out right, or whatever the case is. So, 101, to us, has been doing a very good job in helping us and doing what they can. 102 has on occasion come out for, I don't remember the reasons, but 102, I have a clerk or two that'll come out and help us as well. And this is just from where I'm standing. I don't know that, to close the courthouse, I don't think is the most accurate way to put it. I, I mean, I would admit it, if the courts are there, security will absolutely have to be there. We just basically be barring any, in a nutshell, Pat, we're just going to be closing the city and county offices, the state offices are still going to be up and running, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know who those folks are that are coming in to pay fines, but that's where I've noticed the biggest issue there. And that's the only reason I suggested over the law enforcement center, is that big lobby, is you could spread it out for those different drop boxes that we're talking about doing too. That, you at least have that where you could spread, because what I've witnessed down here in front of the courthouse, that's the worst situation. And we're talking about a short period of time, relatively, and as far as reading signs or getting that information, we've been trying to get that information out to folks, and they're still coming in here, and they still have no clue, you know, what's going on. And, you know, to their credit, they're, they're trying to explain it to folks, but, you know, just like you said, there are some folks that are coming in here. So, I don't know what to do.
No, and I understand, I've, I've been down there times when people have come in saying, well, I need to pay my property tax. So it's still going on.
They still come in to get their driver's license.
You know, because, so, yes, they're coming in to pay their court debt, and if there's a different location for that drop box, that would be spread out so they won't be congested, you know, I don't think the clerk's office would object to that. I don't know that the LEC would necessarily be better, but, and again, hopefully, hopefully, it will decrease as people understand and realize that there are other options to pay, and now that the delinquency is being suspended. My understanding from the clerk's office is that there are just a certain number of people for any type of payment. They pay in cash, they don't even trust sending a check in the mail. They want to hand money to a person to know that it's been paid. And I think that's kind of the walk-in traffic in the end. So that's, that's the goal of the drop box, is to catch those people, and know whether the drop box is a better solution for that than before the drop box, when we were letting them in and going to the clerk's office to make those payments, I don't know. But that's why the drop box is put there, to try to keep them, those who are just there, to put some cash in an envelope and pay, to give them a means to do that without coming into the building as a whole.
It's working about as well as it possibly can, short of the public gathering down there, when they kind of pile in, there's more than two or three, or several of them there waiting their turn to fill out at one station. Obviously, we're cramped for space, but-
It's a bottleneck.
Yeah, it, it's working about as good as it possibly can under the circumstances in the room that we have.
Would it be better to have them go to your people?
I don't know. How was it working before the drop box?
They were still, we were, if they came in and said they had a fine, or paying child support alimony, whatever, tell them, go to 102, and when you're done, go back out. You know, we weren't letting them, or telling them at least, and trying to monitor them so that they weren't wandering around the rest of the building. We did have to work with 102 on, because if it involved the CAPS program, well, then that automatically, 102 is sending them up to fourth floor. So, I think we've got that shut off, but, and I think, again, that's why we're just doing everything at the front door, was to eliminate all that. So, I don't know how else to say it. I think we're, it's, it's working about as good as it possibly can with, with the, with the numbers and the room and the, so...
The treasurer's office has their drive-up window, and now they have cars parked in their back clear up around to Seventh Street there, it's a-
To the Hard Rock?
I quite produced that seventh when I came for the meeting.
No, but, hell, that's another story.
And I apologize if I'm misinterpreted to what's being discussed.
No, you're, you're fine.
Because when, when, at least on behalf of the court, when I hear courthouse closed to the public, I'm envisioning that, at least from the public's perception, is that I can't even open that door to come into the building. And that's what, to me, would be problematic for the courts. And, and it wouldn't necessarily resolve a lot of these issues, because we're still going to have to give that information for people. If you're here for court, we're going to let you in some way or another. So those folks are still going to be coming into the building some way or another. I mean, if, if there's a way, if they, just like the sign now, if they call the clerk's office, clerk's office is going to talk them through how to pay online, or send it, put it in an envelope, or send it by check, and if they understand that, then that's what's going to be done. But-
And then I've had people walk in and say, do you have Wi-Fi here? Because they walk in with a cell phone, but apparently they don't have a plan, they have to use the local Wi-Fi to make a phone call.
Yep.
I didn't know. Okay, so, like I said, they're not going to use ours, either our desk phone, or, so, no, I did not interpret what you said as closing the courthouse. And then, I talked to Mr. Gill, obviously, this morning about this situation too, and this is not a situation or, or an event to be taken lightly, and it is what it is, but I think we need to operate in accordance with what we do here.
Well, I, like I said, we're, we're doing everything that we can to address the whole COVID issue, and every recommendation's made. I mean, I can personally vouch for emptying the soap thing in my bathroom, you know, washing hands and everything else. So, we're trying to do our part as well, within the limitations that we have, and within our requirements to keep things moving. So, and when I say misinterpreted, I may have, like I said, when I hear courthouse closed, and maybe that's not what is being considered, but that's, that's the concern that the courts would have, is that, what that means is that people coming in for court can't open the doors and can't get inside the building.
I, I think your comments are perfectly in order. I personally think there's too many unintended consequences to completely closing courthouse. I think we're doing the best we can.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
I just want to say, and I talked to Pat, and thank you for telling my, what I felt about it, because I don't think it's a viable option either at this time. I just personally want to give a shout out to everybody that's played a part in reducing those numbers. If you think about what was happening before we implemented all these changes, the amount of people, we had more school kids coming in for tours than we have coming in right now. But everybody took a part from the courts, court supervisors, DHS, partner corrections, sheriff's department. There's a lot of people that took a part in, in reducing the numbers of the people that's coming in right now. The implementation of the things that are down there in front of the security, that came from security. Those suggestions that they made to everybody else who had those people still coming into the courthouse. We're just going to have people coming here. We just are. We can tell, we tell people in our office, time and time again, what to do, and they still show up. That's just because they're comfortable with it. So, I don't know how we're going to rectify a lot of that stuff, but I think at this point, it's pretty incredible, the reduction of, of foot traffic that's coming into this courthouse right now. That's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you. You guys?
I can tell you, I'm not in favor of closing the courthouse, Perry. And I said it before, this is where the people do their business. Limiting the traffic, definitely, doing what we can, as long as the sheriff gave us such a good assurance that he would keep it manned, and-
What, so Matthew, you were talking about further restrictions with screening?
Oh, I at least would recommend re-establishing the requirements of, for courthouse security to ask if visitors have an appointment. If we, if we don't extend that, then it defeats the entire purpose of our practice. Right. We could add to that, we could, but I don't know what we'd add. I mean, we had quite a discussion about screening for coughs, and that's not really going anywhere.
A lot of, I mean, what, I think we should, I don't know if we can get any thermometers, and we talked about this too in our meeting, whether, you know, we could, who would do that, whether it's security, or if we had somebody else additionally do that, as far as screening for fever and that type of thing. I think that's, that's what most private sector offices are doing, and I think that, that is something that is reasonable, that we should at least be doing something along those lines.
Did you speak to Director Green about that?
Early on, I talked, he was one that gave me the screening questions that you asked, but I don't think they even have the thermometers that we're talking about, that you can just point at somebody to determine that. I want to do something that's not as invasive.
They don't have?
Did you get any, did you hear anything, Melissa? Because I'm sure that Rocky just wants to ask everybody those questions, and they'll tell him the truth as they, as they come in.
So, Suen District Health wouldn't make available?
I don't know if they had it. We talked early on, and what we talked about was those screening procedures. Those were the ones I brought to you two weeks ago, and we just limited by appointment. And that's what the people are still-
No, I'm not sure what access we have to them, but anybody that comes in the jail, officer, deputy, and inmate, they get their temperature checked, and it's kind of a pointer to, so-
Do you have extras of those?
Huh?
Do you have extras of those?
If we can come up with one, it might be something that we might look at.
Would you, security doing that, or somebody else?
I'm going to, I'm going to check with PJ. I don't know if that's going to look real good for us to be doing it, but I, I will say this, just in, in support of the courts, you know, that's one of the sheriff's many obligations, like the auditor has many-
Right.
And the courthouse, which made you my deputy.
I appreciate that.
You're actually over me on that, so, but, we're responsible for the courts, and when they're open, we are there. So, we're doing everything we can, and I think they are too. I think, as PJ said, I think everybody's doing a good job. It's just unprecedented times.
Right.
There's going to be times that people congregate, and we're going to hope the best. But, you know, what I say is we're fortunate, because we don't live in where mass transit is, and we don't have a lot of those big issues, but, you know, if everybody stays home, helps drop the curve, so-
No, and if we're able to do what we can want to do in the recorder's office, I think that will slow down some of the foot traffic.
Yeah, I do, I think the traffic, I know in the LEC, and I think in the courthouse, it is really going down. Now, where it hasn't, is up in the treasurer's, the drive-through. I feel sorry for Mike, because that line is forever, but-
You'd think they would stick it out.
I even took a complaint from the treasurer, and I told him under the code, I was not, that was not one of my issues, so.
Well, one of the, one of the issues that we have is increasing, is in vital statistics, is that people want to get that little gold star on their driver's license.
Oh, yeah, I know.
That's been put back a year though, hasn't it?
Yeah, it has been pushed back, yes.
October of 2011.
See, I don't even know that, and those people are still coming in.
Yeah, so we could help on that, because it has been back a year, so, that, because I get, I, I saw some people that came over, and they had to get all these things, and I said, I said, that's been pushed back. Well, we're going to do it anyway, though. But it would help us if you did go, so. Yeah, it's probably one of the extra things we need to add on to the little note. I mean, we have a deal on our website that tells all the things that we're doing and not doing. I don't know how many people pay attention to websites, you know?
No, that's, I mean, we see the people coming in, and-
Yeah.
They act like they haven't seen anything or heard anything.
Right, but maybe if that's a question that we asked up front, you know, what's your business? If they're saying, well, I'm coming to get a records-
Right.
Just maybe throw out that, you know, you don't need it now, it's got a year delay, so.
Thank you.
Before we got off the topic, you were saying something about conversing with PJ, and-
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
Seeing how we could-
Is PJ still here?
No.
He left. Well, yeah, I don't-
Because, I mean, I, I, I mean, I agree with the-
I'm sure we're okay to point a thermometer at them, I'm sure there won't be any issue.
As long as you tell them what it is.
Yeah. Josh was here, yeah.
Are you cleaning it every time?
I don't, I don't see where it'd be an issue.
You don't touch them with it.
But I'd hate to do something without getting legal advice, I always do.
Well, I can see it when you're, when you're entering into your jail.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, they're, they're in custody, that's one thing, but, I mean, I'm, I'm just wanting to kind of stand back a little bit when they're walking into just a, a public building, and then all of a sudden we're-
Well, they are doing it, they are doing it in a lot of buildings.
Yeah.
So I, I, I think, everything that I think we should be doing is erring on the abundance of even more caution.
And then, and then tell them they've got a certain temperature of X, and they can't come in, or?
Right, yeah, yeah.
What's the limit at the jail?
The jail, yeah, that's a nightmare, and we-
No, what's the temperature limit?
If it's 100.4.
Or higher?
Yeah.
That's what the CDC said.
Yeah.
You won't take them?
And what do you do with them?
Oh, yeah. So then we, we punt, we go to Plan B.
Give them Tylenol, and tell them to call you in the morning?
What's that?
Take two Tylenol, and tell them to call you in the morning?
We got a room for them, and they're under observation.
Just take some shots of Tabasco real quick.
We have to really worry, because then we have fourteen employees that we got to worry about. I mean, it's a nightmare. Not anything I'm really wild about talking about, but yeah, we, we're prepared if, if need be, but yeah, we know that if we have somebody come in with that, it's going to have issues.
Well, yeah, in my opinion, asking the health questions was kind of iffy on getting a legal ground for that, I guess, but it is a pretty standard practice in private businesses. No one would be surprised, or, or anything, if you say you can't come into the courthouse with a fever. I mean, that is just-
Pretty standard right now.
Standard. So, we need to get those thermometers from somebody, and-
We could see if I, I don't know-
If, if it's not, you know, security doing it, then if you could help find out who could.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we'll figure something out.
That'd be great.
So, where you at, the board is at, is that your order, or your directive expired today?
Yes.
You need to take some action, what you want to do at this point.
Will you go through May on that, or what?
At least the end of April, I would think.
I would too.
So, at least for one item, I'd move that, the same language as two weeks ago, which was to move that courthouse security be required to ask, do you have an appointment to any visitors entering the courthouse, expiring April thirtieth?
Second.
Well, you want to just make it May fifth, since that's our next meeting, after May?
Cinco de Mayo?
Sure. Is that okay with you?
Ah, that's fine.
Expiring May fifth. Second by Potabom, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero. Any other actions we want to take? I want to wait until next week to find out about the temperature, we just wanted to recommend that now, as soon as possible.
Go ahead. I'd say if we don't have- I'd say if we don't have the equipment, why would we bother talking about it?
No, because then we'll get the equipment, and maybe it'll be before Tuesday.
Can't know who's going to do it, though.
Yes.
I think we can adjust that next week.
Okay.
Because I'm sure this will be on the agenda every week.
Yeah, it's our new LEC bonding permanent item.
Okay, the weather ball is green, no change foreseen.
For a week. Any other action we need to take, or discussion on the only topic in the world today? No, all right. Item 12, reports on committee meetings. Only once. Had law enforcement authority met today and approved the contract with Goldberg and Associates. Very good.
For them.
On that note, Dennis, you mentioned you're going to bring something next week?
Next week, I'll be coming forward with a structure, because we have to have a financing structure to get a lease with the authority. Authority, before we can borrow $1, we have to have a lease agreement with the city count or city authority, authority county. On our side is the payment of the bonds, basically, because we've agreed to do all the operational costs. So I'll be talking with our attorney down in Moyn, and he's going to be drafting a lease, because we got to get those kind of done, because of casual authority before the board and before the council. So we're probably talking three or four weeks at least. Then we got to get a rating before we borrow the money, and it just goes on and on, but some of these people are going to get money, you know, be paid, because we're going to start the process here. So we're working through that, but the main thing is try to get the leases, so we'll come back with some kind of a structure next week, for board to look at, and then we'll send that to Jason, our attorney down there for the authority, to draft up our side, and then we'll work with the city on that side for the infrastructure that are outside this site.
Any other reports on committees? I have a board of health meeting tomorrow morning, I'll be sure and update the board on that. 13, citizen concerns. We have a caller that's been on hold for about an hour now, right, Andy?
Switchboard is empty.
Oh, they hung up? Okay. I was just kidding, there was, there was no citizen caller. Total transparency for the whole meeting, although someone's probably watching. I have a feeling, I have a feeling we're being watched.
Hello to all the media watching, though.
Yes, hello to the media. Thank you for caring and for watching us while we meet alone here in the basement of the Woodbury County courthouse. Item 14, board concerns. Everyone's doing all right. We're all still here, still have a quorum, passed the budget, it'll be all right. Our adjourns.